Okay, folks. Travis, we got everybody?
Looks like it. Oh, we don't know Joseph.
All right. Let's give him a minute.
Here he comes. Dave, I think we get approved the agenda and start off.
Joseph on?
Yes, we have Joseph.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, regular meeting in the Windsor Heights City Council called order roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Uh, Mike, uh, Mike Jones.
Here.
And Teresa Harms.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Just time for anyone to make comments, not on city business, name, address, and limit yourself to five minutes.
Hi, Lauren Campbell, one zero zero four sixty-third Street, Windsor Heights. I just wanted to remind everybody, I'm sure you've seen in your emails, but celebrate Windsor Heights, our virtual celebration uh, that we rescheduled due to COVID is December second. It's a virtual event. It's going to have a drive-through pickup of a charcuterie board and wine, and you'll take it home and get to enjoy um, the festivities in the comfort of your home. And we're doing some videos too of spotlighting any businesses that are interested. And also, we've got one planned to spotlight the city. So Mayor Dave will be uh, recording as well. We're hoping to get Dennis. Um, I think Edie is uh, probably going to bug Dennis till he agrees. So hopefully he makes that that process painless for everyone just by agreeing with her. Uh, but otherwise, it's going to be a um, online celebration of all things Windsor Heights. Um, and uh, it is open to the public. It is, you don't have to be a business owner um, to to come to it. So the more the merrier. And again, it's going to be um, a drive-through pickup of your charcuterie board to take home and enjoy and celebrate Windsor Heights.
Hey Lauren, what time is it on that day?
I believe it is, uh, I believe it starts at five, um, but I'll confirm and make sure that that gets sent out to everybody. I apologize. I don't have that up in front of me right now.
That's okay. Thank you. I just wanted to get it on my calendar.
Yeah, and I think the pickup um, at Hy-Vee will be like starting at three. So if anybody is scooping to pick up kids after school and wants to grab it and then take it home, it'll save you an extra stop as well. So doing everything we can to make it easy for people to celebrate Windsor Heights.
Awesome. Thanks for doing it. Sounds fun.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Noteakers. Uh, next item is consent agenda. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Dave, I'd like to pull, uh, I just have a question about B, the payment of claims.
You mean C, payment of claims?
B says approve payment of claims. On the consent agenda.
Okay, you want to pull it out?
Yeah, I used to have a question about it. It's no big deal. I don't want to. Can I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
Okay, uh, is Rochelle with us?
Don't we have to approve the agenda first?
I thought we did.
Or are we on, oh, we're on, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, motion in the second, so we could do discussion, which I think is what would follow with Mike. Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mike.
Just a simple question. Others probably already know the answer. Those interest payments with the U and B bank, now is that for the bonds?
Uh, yeah, Mike, those are due the first um, December every year. So those come out automatically from the, from the checking account.
Okay, Travis, that's for the, the uh, like sixteen million dollars of the bonding we have out.
I'm not sure about those, but it would be any of our existing bonds. You always, in Iowa, you guys pay the interest in December and then the principal and interest payment in June.
Can you find out what that is for then specifically?
Yeah, I can find out the specific interest payments.
I don't appreciate what it's for. I mean.
Yeah, definitely.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, it would be for all our borrowing, but I can certainly get that for you or get.
It's real money for me.
Oh, no. Yeah, it's just. We can get it broke out for you.
Okay.
Handle it, Mike.
No, that was it.
Okay. Go ahead. We got a motion in a second.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Mike, uh, Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
And Susan Skerries.
Yes.
The next item is race to the resolution twenty twenty dash one one seven. To appoint a member, an alternate member to the Polk County nine eleven service board. Uh, he's the primary, Derek will be the alternate. Motion to approve.
So moved. I'll second Mike Jones.
Roll call.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
And Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty twenty one eighteen, approving a member and alternate member of the Polk County Emergency Management Commission. I'm on it. And Mike Jones is the alternate. Motion to approve.
So moved, Dave.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yeah, I actually, I'm gonna um, not vote on that. I'm gonna abstain. Thank you.
Do you need to, do you need to list a reason to abstain?
Do I? Aaron?
I believe you do.
No, you, sorry. Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
You can declare the conflict. So if you've got a conflict, you just say that you have a conflict and are abstaining.
Okay. I'm abstaining.
Just checking.
Need to say what it is? Okay, thank you.
You don't need to say what it is, no.
Okay.
Okay, we get uh, that one done, Travis?
Yes.
Okay, next item is resolution twenty twenty one nineteen. Appointing a commissioner and alternate commission to Dart, Joseph, and Mike LaFredo.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Well, I actually would like to just take a moment um, and have comment. Um, so I know um, I, I just want to note that I'm happy to serve on any of these um, committees and um, I understand it's the uh, discretion of the mayor to make those appointments. But I've had conversations with other mayors and other city council members on many of these um, uh, outside commissions. Um, I've had the honor of uh, representing Windsor Heights on Metro Waste Authority for the last five years. And um, I know that other cities uh, regularly uh, rotate their council members. Um, I know that um, I've not served on anything other than Metro Waste. Um, I'd like to serve on something else, um, just as an opportunity to have that um, experience to um, uh, and, and opportunity to represent uh, the folks that I was elected to, to serve. Um, I also don't, I, I believe that other people on this council have not had the opportunity to serve either on other um, outside committees. Um, and so I'm just noting that I've, I've not been, and I'd, and I know I've brought this up before. This is not a new issue that this council is hearing. Um, and so I would ask that uh, moving forward, that we consider folks and um, other folks to serve on these and that we consider rotating um, as other city councils do um, across the metro. Thanks.
Any further comment? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Um, I'm not voting, declaring a conflict. Thank you.
Next item is uh, consideration resolution twenty twenty one twenty, appointing a member and alternate of the MPO. Joseph is the primary, I'm the alternate. Alton is the primary on the technical, transportation technical committee, and Dennis is appointed as the alternate. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? Anyone?
I will second it.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
I'd just like to say that I also um, am more than willing to serve um, any of these committees. My committee has never met. That is my one outside committee. Um, so I have never met with that committee and um, would just like to be able to kind of see how other committees work. Well, any outside committee works since I have yet to experience that um, in my year here. So I just wanted to, to say that I am also more than willing to serve on, on the committees here.
Which one are you on, Susan?
Um, I think it's called the Housing Authority.
Okay. I didn't know we had one. I didn't know.
That's, I think, why I've never had a meeting.
Okay, all right.
So back to you, Travis. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then um, Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Abstaining. Declaring conflict.
Next item is uh, consideration resolution twenty twenty one twenty-one. Approving the watershed management authority coordinator funding. We've done this in the past and it's well worth it. Dalton, if you want to comment, please do.
Who are you? I don't have really.
Pardon?
I don't really have too much to add other than what's in the, the write-up in the packet. If anybody's got questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Dalton, can you remind us?
Sorry, what's that?
I said, can you remind us what our role is?
The city Windsor Heights' role in that?
Yep.
So the city Windsor Heights is currently the chair of that, um, the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority.
And so you're the chair, and so what do you do?
It's a lot of um, coordination and it's like we had a meeting either last week or the week before. Uh, they talked about funding opportunities, partnerships on um, watershed approaches to flood, flood management, um, which resulted in a follow-up meeting with the city of Clive to discuss where they're at with their floodplain study. So um, the Walnut Creek WMA isn't as far along as the WMA is on the east side of Polk County, but it's getting there. And for the price that Windsor Heights is paying into it, it's a, a pretty, pretty good value. So the the significant grant that we got this summer from the NRCS, uh, we probably, probably would not have gotten that grant or even known about it if it hadn't been for the WMA. So we got a, about a seventy thousand dollar grant. So it's a pretty good return on investment there.
Dalton, I, I noticed that uh, one of the objectives that Dennis put together um, mentions the watershed projects.
Yep, and that's something that uh, Mike and Mike, we've been talking about with the Public Works Committee. So um, we, like I said, we had a meeting last week on Tuesday, I think, with uh, some staff from Clive to see where they're at with their study. So that we don't kind of reinvent the wheel. They've already got data that we could use, and they do, um, we're gonna um, utilize that data.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's good that you're on there since it's one of the objectives there listed, and I think it's a good objective under one, under one of the goals.
For the record, I'm a fan of the, the Walnut Creek watershed, and I support it, and I have supported it for, for a long time. I think we have an integral role in that, and I know that we've had um, residents who have been very involved in that in the past as well. So um, I too think it's, it's a good investment um, of that. So I would move to approve this, and then I would also ask um, that we get um, at a minimum, maybe quarterly updates on what the Walnut Creek watershed is up to and kind of what's on your agenda or on your strategic plan and what you're working on. So we can just have a better sense ongoing of what is um, what's, what's happening in that space. Thank you. So I moved to approve.
Anything?
Second.
Roll call.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number six on University Avenue project. Approve.
So moved.
Back in.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Hey Dalton, can I ask a question, Dave? Uh, shouldn't be asking you that. They asked a question about.
Go ahead.
Went for a walk today, and anyway, I ended up on Allison, and I just see that that's at a standstill, at least it was today. Is that? What's going on there? I know there are updates, but I guess I, I would just surprise if there's no work being done.
Justin, you there? Yep, they're doing some final touch upgrading and they're putting rock in tomorrow morning.
Well, they weren't doing any grading when I was there.
Yeah.
The, the big uh, machine was just idle and there was no personnel there on site. So, just to let you know that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, so I have a question on college as well. I wasn't able to be on the Friday call because I was traveling and I'm sorry if that seems like an inconvenience. Um, so can we get an update on college, please?
Yep, they were poured uh, two halves intersections this morning. Uh, they also poured sidewalk on stage two. And they're just continuing to do in sidewalk and driveways. Uh, hope Russell should be getting finished up the rest of the week here. Got a couple bigger driveways that we have to pour, and then they'll finish up those intersections. It will be the ends there and start backfilling.
So how far behind are we on now then on? On college?
Um, we're just, the weather puts back a little bit here. Um, as far as moving ahead, we're gonna have to just play kind of what the weather is gonna be doing here coming up. Um, this week was good, but last week wasn't. So um, we're just a little bit behind, just the weather turned there on us for a week, so.
I guess I'm just curious, because the last conversation that I had, I think with, with Dalton, um, maybe two Fridays ago was that we were um, that they were going to be on the twenty-sixth. They were supposed to, I thought that was the timeline, and maybe I have my date wrong, but that's when they were supposed to be starting phase four. So I, I lived there. I get a lot of questions, and so I'm just trying to figure out, how do I tell people what's going on? So I'd like to just have some sense of how we can update folks um, on what they can expect moving forward on, for the rest of phase, phase four. When will you make a decision on that, I guess, is the question on whether or not you'll move forward or, or punt until next year?
Yeah, um, you know, like, this weather gave us the little curveball here this week. So um, we're continuing to move forward um, until, you know, we, it's gonna be a kind of a week by week here, because beginning of next week looks rainy and whatnot. So if the the weather turns and gets cold, uh, we probably might just have to pull the plug. I guess I really don't want to start opening it up, and then all of a sudden it really goes bad, and we have no opportunity to get it back. So that's, that's kind of my one concern is um, opening it up and never getting back in. So um, I think right now we're, we're shooting to keep on going, but um, if the weather turns here, then again, then we're obviously gonna have to make a decision whether to go. So it's probably not a clear answer for you, but um, we're trying to move along as much as we can. And just kind of playing the weather as we can too.
So the weather last week inhibited working on the streets?
Yeah, what, the, the early, so that rain wasn't last week, but it was the week before that Thursday, we got over two, three inches, then it snowed, but Sunday. And then it got really cold. So once you get, once it starts getting down cold, it's pouring concrete is not the best time to be pouring concrete. Once it starts staying under freezing for all day. If, if, if you, if it warms up during the day, then you can pour concrete, but then, but a couple of those days, like Monday and Tuesday was not getting much above freezing there. So that held everything up on that end.
Well, this week's supposed to look good for the weather.
Yep, yep. So they're pouring as much as they can this week, taking advantage of the weather.
That's why I couldn't understand there was no workers on Allison.
Yeah.
I think you need to check on that, Justin.
Yep, I was out there. They were doing some grading, and they were fixing a couple of pipe work, and they're scheduled to be out there in the morning.
When more, oh, early in the morning?
Yeah, they're hoping to get rock done by noon, so.
There was nobody there. I was there uh, in the morning. There was nobody there.
Yeah, they were there in later, in mid-afternoon-ish, on and off.
Well, there is a question in chat from Barb uh, Fattino, and it's, is if, if the driveway approaches don't get completed on Allison Avenue due to the cold and snow, what happens for the remainder of the winter?
Um, driveways are a little bit easier to take care of than mainline. Um, they're, the goal is to get all those, well, those all will get put in, and then that two B or two A or whatever that's called there for the intersection of sixty-fourth.
I mean, so, so people have to head, they can't come out on, on to sixty-fourth, right?
Uh, right now they can, but once we get paving done and probably maybe sometime next week, depends on what the schedule and weather looked like, then that will be the case, yes.
Well, it didn't look, it was, it's all blocked off when I was there with the big machine there, and then.
Yeah, yeah. There'll, there'll be times where they're unloading and loading equipment that it's kind of blocked off at some point.
So, hope that, hope that, so they can get out in the winter at least.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add for everybody's um, information. Justin and the contractors are moving as aggressively as possible on my deck, on my direction to try to get as much done as we can before the snow. And I'm going to be making that call at the very last minute. We're going to push this up until the very last minute, so we can get as much done before we have to close down for the season. But prior to that happening, I will be in contact with everybody on the council. You'll know exactly what's going on, and you'll know exactly the thinking behind when we're going to shut down. And if there's to be a discussion there, we'll have that discussion. So I just wanted to reassure you that we're going to push up to the very last minute.
Well, let's, let's hope the residents on, particularly on those streets are kept up to date. Did I come through on that? Did my comment come through?
Yes, Mike.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't get any acknowledgement, so, anyway, okay.
Barb, does that take care of your question?
Dave, sorry. Um, yeah, but I, there were some concerns with some of them. So will they have an alternative to their driveways if that concrete does not get poured? Will they do something to the driveway so these people can use it if the street is open?
Justin.
Hello?
Yeah, yes, we will get them in their driveways.
But how?
Um, the goal is to pour concrete. So if there's, they'll be able to cover up and put that in there, um, concrete in there with some of the weather. Um, you know, the average temperature is still fifty-five degrees for high right now. So there's, there'll be days that they can pour, and it won't take them long to put, pour those driveways back in.
Okay, well, there's just concern, they were all talking, they haven't been notified of anything. We're finished and, and we're all good, but there are people up there that don't know what's going on. But how about next week looks ugly? I mean, and we're, then we're already into, you know, week two of November, and I think their concern is if they don't have a driveway all winter, if there's some way, if the concrete's not poured, if they'll be able to drive into their driveways.
Mr. Mayor.
Justin, don't they cover the uh, concrete with straw sometimes? When it's cold?
Right, they have, they have insulated blankets and um, burlap and then plastic, and they have means and methods to cover that.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought.
Mr. Mayor, we're pretty sure we're gonna have the concrete poured and done, and everybody's gonna be happy. But in the outside chance that that doesn't happen, we're still gonna make good on making that concrete temporarily accessible during the winter season. So uh, regardless of how the weather goes, everybody will be able to get in and out of the driveway just fine.
Okay, that, that was their concern, is, is that? Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Thanks, Dennis. Next item on the agenda is council reports, committee updates. Reese?
Um, thank you. So uh, Metro uh, Waste had a couple of things um, going on, including a board meeting where we um, had a public hearing to approve the um, the West, so it'll be in Grimes Material Recovery Facility. Um, um, contract for the planning and building of that facility out of the Grimes location. And then we also had a groundbreaking for the, for that facility um, out as well. So what they do is they receive, separate, and prepare recyclable materials for end-user manufacturers. So taking what we get and then selling it for um, on the other side, which keeps um, our rates for in, for our um, for our residents lower. So um, helping cover the costs of running facility and those sorts of things. So those two things happening with Metro Waste. Um, we covered the college timing and then um, the Allison stuff as well. So I think that's it on my end. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Jones?
Nothing new from me.
Dave, Mike LaFredo?
I'll pass, Dave.
Joseph?
Nope, nothing for me.
Joseph, have you got anything? There you go.
Did you hear me? I said nothing for me.
Again now, yeah.
So. No.
We're not getting you coming through, at least I.
You won't hear me.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I can. He said nothing.
I said nothing.
I've been having problems hearing the mayor during this.
He's not coming through clear. You're right.
I can't hear him.
Now, I'm gonna switch uh, I'm gonna switch laptops between meetings, because I'm not sure this one is working right.
Okay, Joseph said pass, Mayor. Okay, Joseph said pass, Mayor.
Okay. Susan?
Um just a reminder that uh the communications that Whitney put out um a survey, asking people to kind of look through and um figure, put out how they would like communication to come out from the city. Um there's a survey that is listed on Facebook, um I guess I didn't check Instagram, but I'm sure she put it on all our social media sites as well as our website, so if you could just kind of point people to take that uh survey, so that the Communications Committee can kind of uh look to see how our residents would like us to communicate with them, that would be great, and then on Friday, uh we were able to um be with the chamber as they did a ribbon cutting for Eileen's cookies, and um I do have to say that those cookies were pretty darn good, and um I, it's gonna be a problem for me to have to drive past instead of stopping and picking up cookies there, so.
Oh, go ahead, Susan. Help, help the commerce in Windsor Heights.
I, I did do that on Friday, no, no doubt, and that's it.
Dave, up to you now.
Yeah, okay, well, I will sit there, I think I'm having trouble with low bandwidth tonight, too. Uh Dennis, you got any administrator comments?
Uh two things we wanted to let the council know about, I'm gonna tell you about the first one, that's Jake's Fireworks is moving forward with their uh development, their site plan uh expired, so we were going through the process of reaffirming that, and the council's gonna see that hopefully on November sixteenth. And then Chad, if you're on the line, can you give the council an update on the um RFP for the compensation study information?
Yeah, we received a total of seven proposals, which I was pretty happy with, considering we only had two for the uh one that we put out for the city earlier in the year. And I'm putting a summary together of those, we'll take it to the Public Safety Committee at our November meeting, I hope, so we'll have some of them back to council in December, we hope.
You also have a new hire starting, don't you?
I do, we have a new uh female officer who starts tomorrow, and I will put out a short bio on her, uh once we get her uh in here and onboard.
Exactly.
Hopefully, the, doesn't cause too much of a problem, so.
Chad, is that the detective position?
Uh she'll be an officer, but it's filling the vacancy that came from Amanda Lee, I mean, yes.
Okay.
Okay, that should do it, uh motion to adjourn to the workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Fredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.